Going to call this April 20th meeting to order and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Council President Smith?
Here.
Council President Green?
Here.
Councilmember Lyda?
Here.
Councilmember Middlebrooks?
Here.
Councilmember Murphy?
Here.
Councilmember Posey?
Here.
Councilmember Shaw?
Here.
All right, everything is unanimous. I'd like to ask the clerk to provide the invocation. And tonight, Mr. Posey is going to conduct a pledge by himself. Apparently last week, when everything was working well, we created a lot of feedback. So in order to just allow one person to be heard, Mr. Posey will please take care of the pledge. Madam Clerk.
Please bow your heads. Dear heavenly Father, We pray you be with Frank Stevenson and his family. We pray he is found quickly and that he is safe. Alabama also had loss of life from the storms yesterday. Please be with the family and the friends during this time. And we pray that you heal those that were injured quickly. We pray for your protection around those with COVID-19, the ones helping them, the businesses that are closed and the ones open, and each and every individual. Please guide those making decisions and give them wisdom. In the name of your son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. At this point, chair is open for approval of the minutes for April 6.
Mr. President, I move for approval of the minutes without reading.
Mr. Lyda has made a motion to approve without reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Middlebrook is the second. All in favor, well, we're going to do roll calls on everything so we have a clear, concise determination. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Green? Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Lyda?
Aye.
Dr. Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye. Minutes are approved. Mr. Mayor, do you have any reports or recognitions?
Yes, sir. Just a little brief report if I could. Thank you very much. Good to be back with everyone. Just a little update. I know several of you are on the briefing this morning for our emergency operations center that is continuing to run and being very effective in managing the day-to-day incidents that are going on in our city. We're continuing to work on our budget for this year and we're going line by line and department by department to make sure that we are eliminating nonessential operational expenses. You know, we're hearing a great deal from the president, the lieutenant governor, and of course, our governor's office in terms of opening up our country again. I've talked to members of the president's task force and I've talked to the governor's task force, and I can assure you that they are all moving in that direction. So as we open businesses, the openings will be based on science that can justify the safety and health of the workers and the patrons of that business. With that said, I will establish our own task force in Hoover to work towards opening up our facilities as well. I asked Mr. Lyda to serve on that task force and he has accepted and I appreciate it. And probably 50 or 60% of what we're going to have to open falls under his category of park and rec. So there'll be a lot of challenges there. With that said, we're not going to work independently or outside the recommendations of our health officials. That's kind of been our motto and that's who we have followed all along. We too want to make sure that the safety of our citizens and our employees that serve them are protected. And as I promised a week or so ago, we will be delivering a financial update every two weeks. So if there are any questions, I'll ask Mr. Rice to step forward and give that report.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. President, members of the council. You received this probably about 30 minutes ago by email. It's not our intent to make this a late-breaking report, but we did have some department head reviews that actually concluded at 4:00 today. So we wanted to have a minute to incorporate the updates from those conversations. So what you have is the absolute latest up-to-date information. We did try to highlight for you some areas of change. We're very excited. This is a positive update for you this week. We'll continue with these at every regular city council meeting going forward. So you'll note that, of course, the travel line item that was targeted for elimination, that was a complete elimination. So that number will not change because all of that money has currently been swept out of the budget. You will also note, number one, B, under operating, we've increased our level of review. So now we have every requisition at the executive review level. So there are no purchases being made citywide that are not undergoing executive review. One C, other cuts from operating, we initially set a target of 1.4 million initially in the first round. We're very excited to tell you that we've not yet met with all departments, but we currently are at $1,156,642, which is 83% of that target. So I want to just take one second to compliment and sincerely thank all of the department heads and the finance staff because they're all working very hard. But even more importantly, they're working with the right attitude. Many departments are turning back in money that we anticipated they might be able to. And they are focusing on providing services to the public, but they're also focusing on doing their part to get us through this very difficult time. And then that, they have my sincere thanks for that. And one D, savings from unfilled positions has increased by $107,551. So you have a new total there. Savings from canceled events has increased slightly from 20, up by $25,199. So there's a new total there. We are still working to dig into overtime, so we did not have an opportunity to change that figure. But at this point in time, we're still working towards the $501,000 target. And there could be additional savings there. And moving to capital, the elimination of new vehicle purchases was a complete elimination. So that number also will not change. That $500,000 was all that was allocated for that purpose. We were able to add slightly to capital project closeouts, so you have a new figure there. We did not yet identify any additional capital projects that could go to the energy services contract. We did actually find one that was double counted. It's an ESCO-eligible project, but I also had it on the list last week as a capital project. So we removed it from that list, kept it on the ESCO list. And then, of course, the capital number has changed rather substantially. You have an updated list attached to this report. And I've spoken with Mr. Posey and he and I will be meeting sometime this week by telephone. We did move several projects over from his list onto ours and we're continuing to comb through the remainder of those. And he and I will work together to continue to expand. So we think that this potential capital, canceled capital projects list will continue to grow. So we have a new total. When you also take into account unallocated capital funds of $13,161,218. And so that's an increase of $1,994,681, almost a $2 million increase from where we were a week ago when we spoke. And we have a couple of outstanding items that have been requested by council members. Mr. Smith, I know you had asked for a list of budget adjustments. I have for you a report, but it's in very raw form. And I honestly don't know that the information is very helpful the way it is right now. So I want to talk to you about that offline and make sure that we get exactly what you're looking for. And then Dr. Middlebrook had asked a question about capital projects. And I think, Dr. Middlebrook, that my conversation with Mr. Posey will yield the list that you were asking about and we'll get that out to all council members as soon as we can. So with that, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them or one of our staff on the call could probably help.
The savings from the 1.156 million, could you provide a detailed list of how that's broken up?
Yes, sir. At a point in time, we can. Right now, we're keeping a spreadsheet by department, by line item, so by category. It may not have every individual purchase that will be foregone, but it will have a dollar figure in a particular category of purchases. We can provide that to you fairly quickly. And then if you're thinking about individual purchases that will, or expenditures that will forego, that really would, that would take a pretty substantial amount of time, but we could try to work towards that. Or you're just thinking about categorically or purchase by purchase?
In whatever form you currently have it, perhaps in two weeks, we can update it.
Sure. Be happy to do that. All right, so I want to be sure that we understand that we're continuing to climb. We're not done. We clearly heard the preference of several council members last Monday that we shoot for the upper limit figure and hire if we can. And so we're, this is just an interval update. We're not done and we'll continue to pursue that $15 billion figure as we go.
So right now, it looks that our largest savings are capital-driven.
Yes, sir.
And generally, cuts from the operating account really is at 1.1 million.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir. With half of the fiscal year already gone, you know, a lot of that operating money has been spent. There will be some large expenditures that will take place between now and then that are really required. And without beginning to, other than overtime and unfilled positions, without beginning to impact employees and jobs, it's tough to reach substantial operating savings. Now, there are a couple caveats to that. We are impacting employees in the sense that there's no travel, there's almost no professional development, and you know, several things that will have an impact. But when I say impact, I mean significant impact to existing employees. Secondly, we are taking a look at a number of things that will change our budgeting philosophy for FY '21. So we won't wind up with a budget that looks exactly like FY '20. I think we'll have a new methodology.
Mr. President, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Rice, the positions that were approved, the recent positions that were approved and the other big long list, those are assuming that none of those other positions are hired, that only the current list of approved positions are part of the budget, correct?
Well, actually, Mr. Shaw, it assumes that only seven of the approved positions are. So I think, I think the entire list of vacancies was 61. And if I'm not mistaken, the council's action would actually give the mayor the authority to hire 23 of those. But at this point in time, he only anticipates hiring seven of those. And those are seven critical public safety positions. So it actually anticipates that the balance of those 61 minus seven would remain vacant. There could be minor changes with some seasonal positions. We're evaluating some summer programs and whether or not they should go forward. And if they do, we might have a small number of seasonal positions that have to be hired at their very minimal cost.
So the assumption in this plan currently, as presented tonight, is seven of those 61 moving forward. That's subject to change. That's the current snapshot.
That's right. And those are seven full-time positions. That list that you were presenting, the 61, was full, part-time, and seasonal.
Okay.
And so this would be seven of the full-time positions. Yes, sir. Everything else remaining vacant at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rice?
Yes, sir.
We approved the 23 positions. If you only plan on hiring seven of those, do you really need the other 16?
Do you mean, do we need to leave them in the budget?
Yes.
I would, my answer to that is yes. The vast majority of those are public safety positions. But I think that what we're trying to do is take advantage of a couple factors. One is that by cutting overtime so substantially with canceled events, there's kind of a sweet spot there where sometimes you can provide minimum staffing by use of overtime cheaper than by going out and filling all your full-time positions. So it's not that we don't need them or we could give them away forever. It's that there might be a cheaper way to do it right now. The other factor is that with school being out for several months, we have a number of full-time school resource officers who are available to the police department to use where they see fit. So in speaking to Chief Thursis, four of the seven positions are patrol officer positions that are currently being hired. Beyond that, he has additional vacancies and will continue to have some vacancies. But for, at least for the time being, he has a number of SROs who are not currently tasked with the schools. And so they can be used for a number of months to try to fill those positions. I wouldn't, I think to say that we could give those up would dilute the public safety coverage that we have citywide right now permanently. That's not something we're looking to do, but we do think that there are less expensive ways to achieve that coverage for the time being.
Wouldn't it look better to the public on our saving their tax dollars if we did not appropriate them, if they don't plan to be filled?
Well, Mr. Smith, I can't speak to what the public might say. I can tell you that the plan is not to fill them today. I'm not aware that anybody has a plan not, never to fill them. But we don't plan to fill them at this point in time. That's certainly a conversation for the mayor and council to have about what level of public safety you want to provide. But right now, our plan is to save money while we're in this situation without removing police officers and firefighters from the street and 911 telecommunicators from the 911 center permanently.
Mr. Smith, may I contribute to that?
Any other questions? Did I hear Mr. Lyda?
Mr. Smith, yes, sir. May I contribute to that conversation, please?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Rice, I think what Mr. Smith is trying to say is we were asked to fill 23 positions. And of course, the last time we were together in person, Chief Thursis, Chief Bentley, Ms. Moore were paraded in front of the council and asked to give reasoning, if you will, as to why those positions need to be filled today. So the council's commitment and desire was to fulfill positions that needed, that were needed in public safety. That's why those 23 were approved. So I guess going forward, and I think what Mr. Smith, and correct me, Mr. Smith, if I'm misstating this, is that if there's a thought that a position doesn't need to be filled immediately, perhaps we don't collectively consider that position to be approved. Does that make sense to you, Rice?
It absolutely does. Mr. Lyda, and I apologize, I couldn't hear you extremely well, but I think I got your question. It does make sense. And I think what it rests on is we had a transition there between when the original resolution was passed by council and the way that we presented our initial request to fill. And so we were asking for kind of blanket approval at that point in time to fill all public safety positions on an as-needed basis. And what we, what we kind of landed on was that we would bring each vacancy individually to the council for consideration. So if we were doing this, again, if we were doing this under those terms previously, we would have only brought you those seven to fill if that, if that answer makes sense to you.
It does. Thank you for that. And I think, again, I'm one of seven, but I think the desire of the council has been to approve those as needed going forward. So the council, I believe, wants to be involved in those decisions going forward rather than approving X number of positions and just having them maybe sit vacant out there. Does that make sense?
It does. And I think that's our mutual understanding now. Yes, sir. When we, when we first approached, yeah, when we first approached you, we were thinking in terms of blanket approval. But on the backside of that conversation, that's our position now, that we would bring them to you one at a time. And so there's one on this current agenda tonight that we'll be talking about in a few minutes. And I think that's an example of how we plan to approach it going forward. We'll only bring you, for your consideration, the ones that we intend to fill.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Mr. President, this is Derek Murphy. Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, Mr. Rice, in reference to those public safety positions, has the police or fire gave a report? And although we may not have employees, I mean, businesses able to occupy, you know, you have a lot more folks at home, folks who are still driving, some folks in certain areas out of money. Has any theft went up? Has any, has certain crimes have went up? You have more folks at home? Has the fire department had more calls? You know, a lot of times, you still have the people, so it doesn't mitigate a lot of times the police and fire protection that you may need regardless of what the economy is doing. So is the report given from the police department or the fire to kind of validate whether or not what we're doing is going to impact us during this time?
Yes, sir. This morning on the EOC briefing, Chief Thursis gave a very good and very in-depth report on crime by category. So some categories are up, some are down, as you can imagine with the changes in society right now. But remember, we're not, we're not tailoring the positions we fill to the call volume. We're using the benchmark of what is our standard staffing level. So right now, we technically don't have any vacancies in the fire department until May 1. We do have some vacancies in the police department, but then again, because the schools are closed, we have way more excess officers from the schools than we have vacancies. So there's still a net positive number of officers on the street right now versus if school were in session and all of those SROs were working on our campuses. So this is certainly something we'll have to adjust when school gets ready to reopen because those men and women will be removed from patrol and put back on our campuses. And then we'll have to take a look. So we are getting very detailed reports from both the police and fire chief, but we're not, because, you know, the crime stats and the run reports change week to week, month to month. So we're not trying to tailor staffing to that. We're trying to measure it against what's our current standard minimum coverage in both departments and in the dispatch center.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Rice? Anything else you'd like to bring, Mr. Rice or Mayor?
No, so that's my report.
All right, thank you. Moose, I just want, sorry, Mr. Coe. I just want to verify that we are recording to be able to place this on YouTube future.
Yes, sir, we are.
I just want to verify. Now, we're going to move to our regular agenda. Item seven is payment of the bills.
President, I move, this is Lyda. I would move for the approval and then payment of the bills.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Green. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Lyda?
Aye.
Dr. Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy? Mr. Murphy?
Up here. I mean, hi.
Okay. Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye. Payment of the bills is unanimous. Next, we have Resolution 623220. Mr. Corley.
This resolution approves a 050 retail beer off premises and 070 retail table wine off premises. This request, and the mellow, doing 1537 Montgomery Highway, Hoover, Alabama.
Corley, your microphone is going in and out. I think we got the gist of everything. Any, first we'll go with a motion.
Mr. President, I move for approval of Resolution 6232-20.
Second.
Make some motion.
Second.
Mr. Green makes a second. Any comments or questions from the council? I noticed that the applicant is online. You have anything that you'd like to say?
Yes, hi, hello. I'm trying to start my video. I don't know if it's working. But I represent Hader Barwani. And we are very excited to get this station rolling. We've been waiting for months. We were waiting for the paved left turn signal and the turn light there. And we are very, very excited to be part of the Hoover community. Me and my husband, we actually live in Hoover. We just moved here. And this will be our third station and it will be our first in Hoover. So we are very, very excited. Thank you so much for welcoming us and I hope that you come and visit us.
Well, first, sounds like you planned many more.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any comments or questions from the council?
I need a name, please.
I think her name is printed on the screen. Do you see it? I do not want to do her injustice by trying to say it.
It's okay. So the name that you see on the list there is Hader Barwani. And I'm Azmeeen Barwani. I'm his daughter.
Okay. Well, if you would, please spell your name for the clerk since you're on his behalf.
Yes, sir. Azmeeen Barwani. A-Z-M-E-E-N. Barwani. B-H-A-R-W-A-N-I.
Now, are you Azmeeen?
Yes, I am Azmeeen. Yes.
Very good. Very good. All right, Mr. Coe, any comments or questions from the public?
Okay, if you'd like to make a comment, if you'd please unmute your device and state your name. Okay, looks like we're good, councilman.
Hearing none. Any other questions from the council? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Lyda?
Aye.
Dr. Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye. The resolution passes unanimously. Welcome to Hoover. Next, we have Resolution 6233-20. Mr. Corley.
This resolution approves a 020 restaurant retail liquor license requested by Rare Hospitality International doing business as Longhorn Steakhouse, 5626, located at 1063 Amber Drive, Hoover, Alabama.
Mr. President, this is Lyda and I move for approval of Resolution number 6233-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions from the council? Is the applicant online? Mr. Coe, the nice lady that just spoke said that she was kicked out of the meeting and she's trying to get back in, if you can.
I have just let her back in, sir.
Very good. Any comments or questions from the public? This is for Longhorn Steakhouse. All right, not hearing anything from the public. Again, anything from the council? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Lyda?
Aye.
Dr. Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye. Resolution passes unanimously. Welcome to Hoover. Next, on Resolutions 6234-20 and 6235-20, our legal team and I believe the fire department in conjunction have requested that these be continued to our next regularly scheduled meeting. Chief, you on the line? Chief Bentley? Mr. Corley or Ms. Danielson?
Yes, sir. My understanding is that there were some revisions in progress to those agreements and that the and that the chief would prefer for those to be continued until the next meeting.
And that be handled with one motion?
Yes, sir, as long as we specify that both resolutions are being continued until the next meeting or the call of the chair.
Very good. Let's try to handle those together. Do we have a motion to continue?
Mr. President, I would move for the continuance of Resolution six-two-three-four dash twenty and six-two-three-five dash twenty for the next meeting.
Second.
All right, to the next meeting. And Mr. Green, second.
Second.
Any conversation? Comments? Not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Lyda?
Aye.
Dr. Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy? Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye. All right, Items sixty-two thirty-four twenty and sixty-two thirty-five twenty are continued to our May fourth meeting. Resolution sixty-two thirty-six dash twenty, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes the mayor to enter into an agreement with Environmental Systems Research Institute, Inc., in substantially the form as attached to Exhibit A of the resolution.
President, I move for approval of Resolution six-two-three-six dash two-zero.
Second.
Mr. Lyda makes the motion, Mr. Green seconds the motion. Who would like to speak to this particular agreement?
Councilman, this is Moose, I'll speak to it. This is our E L A license agreement that we have with our G I S software provider that gives us our online mapping systems as well as the mapping software that our technicians use.
Is this a continuation of the same provider?
Yes, it is the exact same provider that we've used in the past.
Any change in funding?
It is a change. Previously, for several years, it's been fifty thousand a year. It has gone up to fifty-five.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Cope?
Mr. Cope, John Green, did you say fifty-five or sixty-five?
Fifty-five, sir, a five thousand dollar increase.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any questions from the council? Any counsel, any, any questions from the public? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call vote.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Lyda?
Aye.
Dr. Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye. The resolution passes unanimously. Next, we have sixty-two thirty-seven dash twenty, Mr. Corley.
This resolution approves the request of United States Steel Corporation for the acceptance of perpetual maintenance of those public improvements within the public road right-of-way within the twenty-seventh sector of trace crossings.
President, this is Lyda, I move for approval of Resolution sixty-three-seven dash two-zero.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Lyda, seconded by Mr. Green. I spoke to Mr. Reeves earlier today and noticed a small differential in the bond amount. In the city printout, it says forty-eight thousand five hundred. In U S Steel's application, it mentions only forty-eight thousand. It should be the forty-eight thousand five hundred figure. Mr. Reeves, are you on the call?
Yes, sir, Mr. Smith, that is correct. It was a typo, apparently. It should be forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Reeves? This is the standard acceptance of a, of a public street. Any questions from the public? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Lyda?
Aye.
Dr. Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy? Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye. The resolution passes unanimously. Resolution sixty-two thirty-nine dash twenty, Mr. Murphy, I've, no. Now we got another to get to first. Sixty-two thirty-eight dash twenty, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes the mayor to fill a current employee position vacancy for one accounting specialist payroll, Department eleven.
Mr. President, I move for approval of Resolution six-two-three-eight dash.
Second.
Mr. Lyda provides a motion to approve, Mr. Green provides the second. All the members should have received an email, I believe, Friday, in the latest, from Mr. Rice identifying that this particular position was created when the person that held this position previously was promoted to the position that was created when our employee passed away unexpectedly and sorrowfully. And thus, this created another position in payroll. Payroll, from what I understand, and anybody can correct me if I need to be, only has two people. And we've got quite a few employees and elected people that need to get paid every once in a while. So who, who would like to be available to answer questions, should there be any?
I'm here, Mr. Smith.
All right, Mr. Rice will be available. Any questions for Mr. Rice on this position?
Mr. President, I guess just going back to our earlier conversation about the approved positions. Mr. Rice, this is a position that will be filled and hired and not put on the back burner after it's approved.
Yes, sir, that's exactly right.
Any other questions for Mr. Rice?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Rice, has anyone else from accounting or payroll been filling in while we've only had one person payroll?
We've had a combination of people. It's primarily, at this point in time, the department head and the one person that's responsible for payroll that have been getting out our last couple of payroll cycles. But we are, we have no margin there. And if something were to, you know, unforeseeably and unfortunately happen to either one of those people, we believe we'd be at risk of not being able to process our payroll.
Very good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anything else from the council? Anything from the public? Hearing nothing. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Lyda?
Aye.
Dr. Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye. The resolution passes unanimously. Good luck to whoever fills the spot. Next is Resolution sixty-two thirty-nine dash twenty. Mr. Murphy, I assume you would like to abstain?
That's correct.
All right, please let the record show that Mr. Murphy abstains from any conversation and vote. Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes the Birmingham Water Works to install fire hydrants at the locations issued in the resolution.
Mr. President, I move for approval of Resolution sixty-three-nine dash two-zero.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. Lyda and a second from Mr. Green. These are your standard run-of-the-mill hydrant installations. I spoke with Chief Bentley earlier today, and I think there's only two. Is that correct, Mr. Rice?
I think that's correct, Mr. Smith. Chief Bentley is on the call, and he can hear us, but we cannot hear him. So he asked me to tell you that everything's in order.
He just doesn't like to speak in public, I don't think.
Possibly.
Any questions from the council? Any questions from the public? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Lyda?
Aye.
Dr. Middlebrooks?
Aye.
I have Mr. Murphy abstaining. Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
And Mr. Smith?
Aye. The resolution passes unanimously of those members voting, with Mr. Murphy abstaining. Next, we have Resolution sixty-two forty dash twenty, Mr. Corley.
This resolution informs the Alabama Department of Environmental Management that the actions stated in the resolution have been taken by the Hoover City Council for the Inverness wastewater system.
Mr. President, I move for approval of Resolution number six-two-four-zero dash two-zero.
Second.
Mr. Lyda makes a motion to approve, Mr. Green seconds the motion. Mr. Reeves? Is Mr. Reeves available? Or Mr. Wyatt?
Hello?
Hello?
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir, who is this?
This is Mr. Reeves, I'm sorry.
All right.
Having some technical difficulties on my end.
It's all right, if you would please. Items. Report.
Yes, sir. Item sixteen and seventeen are the yearly reports prepared for two thousand nineteen as required by A D M for the operations of the Inverness and River Chase wastewater treatment plants. These reports are required per the current N P D S permit for each wastewater system, and they're used by A D M in assessing the sanitary sewer needs of the River Chase and Inverness community. And both reports basically state that the Inverness and River Chase systems have been well maintained and operated during the year two thousand nineteen, and that both plants consistently produced high-quality effluent, which was well within the established A D M limits without any significant issues arising throughout the year two thousand nineteen. These reports, with the pending resolution being approved tonight, are due to A D M by May thirty-first of this year. Just a side note, these reports were prepared by Mr. McGraw before he retired, and he did an outstanding job operating the treatment plants during his twenty-seven years of service with the city. And I would just like to say he would be tremendously missed by the folks here in engineering and the folks that he worked with.
Very much so. Are it, just making sure, any deficiencies identified?
No, sir, nothing significant. I think they did replace a pump station, and that was noted, or some pumps at some pump station, nothing really significant, no significant issues in this report.
Are there any maintenance issues that need to be dealt with this current fiscal year?
Yes, sir, possibly. We do have some pump station work that will need to be ongoing. We've had an issue that occurred this past week with a can lift station that was leaking. We're working to get an estimate for those repairs. I don't have that right at this moment. But hopefully, I will have that this week, and we'll be able to get those numbers and the fix for that to the administration.
And they in turn will share with the council. Thank you, sir. Any questions from the council? Any from the public? First, we're going to start with Resolution sixty-two forty dash twenty. Once again, any questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Lyda?
Aye.
Dr. Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye. Resolution sixty-two forty passes unanimously. Resolution sixty-two forty-one dash twenty, Mr. Corley.
This resolution informs the Alabama Department of Environmental Management that the actions stated in the resolution have been taken by the Hoover City Council for the River Chase wastewater system.
Mr. President, I move for approval of Resolution number sixty-two forty-one dash twenty.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Mr. Lyda and seconded by Mr. Green. Mr. Reeves has already gone into detail about this particular resolution when he spoke to the previous. Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the public? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Lyda?
Aye.
Dr. Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy? Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye. Resolution passes unanimously. Next, we have Resolution sixty-two forty-two dash twenty, Mr. Corley.
This resolution amends the budget for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty, as set forth in the resolution.
President, I move for approval of Resolution number sixty-two forty-two dash twenty.
Second.
We have a motion from Ms. Lyda, a second from Mr. Green. First, with item one, I have one question. It's funding additional remediation for Fire Station Number Five to the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars. The money is coming from reducing roof replacement at Fire Station Seven by the same amount. Is, is the roof at Station Seven still funded enough to be able to complete that project?
Alan, you're muted. Now you're unmuted, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, yes, that project at Station Seven is completed, and the thirty-five thousand dollars will not be needed. The fire department and some of our building trades workers self-performed the work at Station Five at a substantial savings over a low bid. But they did need a little bit more money to finish up what they were trying to do. And so Chief Bentley identified where he could pull some savings and complete both projects below budget.
And this will complete the remediation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and item number two, police training center A V equipment. They need fifty thousand dollars, and they would like to fund it out of their federal inmate funds.
Yes, sir, that's correct. The bids came in a little high on A V. Really didn't make sense to ask them to wait, because that would just increase costs if they had to come back later after completion of the building. So we'll spend less money in the long run by letting them proceed. And they did identify that they had enough in their federal inmate fund, special revenue to help fund this unforeseen increase.
Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the public? Did I hear somebody? All right, not hearing anything. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Lyda?
Aye.
Dr. Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye. The resolution passes unanimously. Now it's time for comments and questions. Anything from the council?
Mr. President, I would just commend Mr. Cope on the, the, the meetings seem to go, be going very smoothly now. I know this agenda was pretty simple, but about the time, about the time we stop doing these, I think we'll have it down to a sign, so good job.
Thank you, sir.
Very good, very good.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
In regard to commending personnel tonight, I would like to commend the fireman that did the work on the roof, was it Station Five?
Very good, I know if Chief Bentley's doing anything. Very good, I know, uh, if Chief Bentley's doing anything like Chief Bradley, he looks for people that can bring other talents to the table other than firefighting and EMS. One thing that I would like to bring up, and, uh, Ms. Dickerson, you may be able to explain how we're gonna, how we might go about this. The governor's declaration, does it expire unless she continues at April thirtieth or April twenty-eighth?
I believe it expires April twenty-eighth, but, uh, if she does not, I mean, depending on why she does, it could expand further. So it's, it's in effect until she states that it is no longer in effect.
And then the county health officer? He could still step in?
Right, okay, are you talking about for the teleconference video conference, or are you talking gathering?
I, I want to bring up about, uh, we've got some things that are stacking up that we need to deal with, with an in-person meeting, and I'm just trying to determine how far down the road, and how do we need to handle that? Do we need to pass an ordinance identifying that we will meet again in person in the future, or do we just notify the public?
Well, just notify the public. We do not have to have an ordinance for that.
Very good. Of course, if we do meet in person, we're obviously gonna wanna keep, uh, a six-foot new standard.
That's correct, and it'll also have to adhere to the no more than, um, our, you cannot have ten or more.
Right.
In the gathering place, it'll have to be nine people or under at the meeting location.
Right, but they could rotate, I would suppose.
That, that is correct, they can rotate.
Um, one question I have for the council is, uh, would you all prefer to go back to the senior center, or would you rather go to the library theater? Where do you think spacing would provide the best opportunities?
Well, a question for you, how efficient is what we're doing now? If they have to lift it, and we have a minimal opportunity for folks to attend, it would prevent others from attending, uh, will we be given an option to stick with what we have currently right now, until it is open up to a larger number?
On the public hearings, we will actually have a teleconference and video conference available, and we will post that, so that the public can still attend the meeting. It would just be the, uh, council, and if anybody wanted to come to the meeting, uh, it would be available, but we would still have the teleconference and video conference, so anybody that, um, did not want to actually come to the, uh, meeting location place could actually still do it via teleconference or video conference.
I guess my question is, again, about if only nine people can attend, I really, how impactful can that be until it's a complete lift of the attendance occupancy flow?
Right, it would still be a public hearing, since we would be in a meeting place when you read the governor's declaration, so we could, y'all could meet there and have it, but like I said, the public, the public can still speak and still be in that public hearing via teleconference or video conference.
I, I guess the reason I'm bringing this up, Mr. Murphy, there are certain actions that the city cannot take, uh, unless we are participating in an in-person meeting. Uh, is that correct, Ms. Dickerson?
That's correct.
Mr. President?
Can I find those?
We have a couple of zonings coming up, and they would need to be in a, uh, y'all would need to meet in person at the Hoover Senior Center. And right now, we have the Hoover Senior Center set up, so if y'all wanted to change it, we would have to change that by ordinance.
Okay, Mr. Shaw?
Yes, Mr. Um, Mr. Corley, my understanding of the, um, uh, the, the governor's order that we could conduct regular business, would a zoning case not be regular business that we could, we could conduct in this manner?
I believe that it would, um, but we would, you know, we can evaluate that order and, and talk to you about the, the logistics of that. Um, they, they've given a pretty broad definition of what essential business is during the, uh, COVID-nineteen event that's subject to the governor's order.
Yeah, Mr. President, I would, I'd recommend that we get a, um, a legal opinion on it just to, to be safe, in, in the event that we do have to continue, um, um, doing this until next month, if it, if it expires, then we'll have to figure it out some way, but I'd recommend we get a legal opinion, just because I, I remember reading some of the, the opinions of regular business, I, I don't know, I don't know, but what would not be continued, considered regular business?
Well, I believe in a conversation I'd had with Ms. Danielson, that she agreed with Ms. Dickerson, I could be wrong, but, uh, why don't we go ahead and ask for that legal opinion and have that distributed to the council, um, preferably in the next week, uh, so we can know what our options are going into May.
Yeah, I, I agree with Council.
We'll be happy to do that.
I, I agree with Councilman Shaw, I think that depending on, because different agencies and entities are, are, are looking at the litmus test for the two criteria that make up regular business, and basically, what we do on a normal basis is considered regular business. Uh, so I don't, I, I tend to strongly agree that anything we do can regularly, like a hearing, anything else, will fall upon that bracket.
And, and I, and it says minimum, uh, that y'all can meet on the minimum essential functions of the city, operations of the city, is what the order says, it's the minimum essential functions. Um, me and.
Correct.
And had talked about that, and that's why we were trying to base the public hearing, uh, would be best at the Hoover Senior Center for y'all to meet in person and then do a teleconference and video conference. Um, if y'all deem that a rezoning is a minimum essential function for the operation of the city, then we can, um, definitely get them to give their opinion on that and get back with y'all.
Yeah, that's correct, uh, Ms. Dickerson is correct, that it's a policy call whether, um, business is essential city business, and, um, so you can determine that zoning is essential and, um, move forward.
Okay, I know we've got the one annexation position out east that, uh, I would anticipate having a large participation now with, uh, what Mr. Murphy had brought up, uh, with seven council members and the clerk, uh, and nobody else in the room, that's only gonna allow for two additional people in the room. If Mr. Rice and the mayor are there, then that does not give any room.
It, that, it's actually only nine people that can be allowed, because ten or more can't, so if all seven and me are in there, that's eight people, so allow one additional person.
So that's not much of an answer either, is it?
Well, Ms. Ms. President, that'd be another thing we need to get some guidance on, because the Attorney General's opinion was that you can't stop the public from coming, so, so that limitation, there's, there's a gray area there, you can't block somebody from coming in the room, so if twenty people wanted to show up to, physically show up to the meeting, we couldn't stop them, which is all more reason to, to main, maintain regular business during this method, uh, to make sure we stay in that mode, I would think, and that would be something we need a legal opinion for.
Right, and that's why we had actually already got it together in an area for waiting, so if one person, I mean, if multiple people showed up, one person could be allowed, and if all seven council people, uh, showed up, um, then we could have that, uh, one at a time come in to the Hoover Senior Center, and we would actually have waiting areas for the others and keep them at a six-foot distance, so that we could have everybody that was there to speak, but also, we would definitely have it available for a teleconference or video conference where everybody could speak if they wanted to speak also.
And that, that's why I think we need legal guidance, because the Attorney General said we can't stop people from coming into the room for a public hearing, so we, and especially if we're talking about legal stuff, and, Mr. President, if we face a challenge to any of these votes, I think we need to get a crystal-clear, uh, recommendation on, on how we would run such a meeting.
And I believe, uh, the legal team and the clerk very well may recommend a concurrence vote for everything that has been voted while we've been, uh, anticipating through electronic media. Anything else?
Mr. President, uh, being we have a multitude of, of, uh, cities and municipalities, it may be beneficial to act, uh, Alabama League of Municipals, just their opinion, only because these questions are probably coming from everywhere in the state, so if they're open, I would hope, if they do have a legal group.
That could be one of the resources for our attorneys, I don't think this would be considered a special project.
And we have talked to them about this.
Any other?
What did they say? Remind if I asked, Mr. President, what was their recommendation?
That's fine.
They, they did state that it was anything related to COVID and also anything related to the mental essential function, so it's what y'all deem as the minimum essential functions for the operations of the city. And then it has to be, uh, the guidelines adhere to, so even if it's one person coming in at a time for a public hearing, um, that, that's still allowing everybody in there to speak. It's, it's not, e- even though we would be, um, limited on how many at a time, they would still have the opportunity to speak, and that's the same as even if they were on teleconference or video conference, they still have the opportunity to speak.
Well, we've already asked.
At public hearing.
We've already asked our legal staff to look into this, and we'll have a report by the end of the week. Do we have any conversation on any other topic from the council? From the public?
Yes, hi, how are you? This is Azmin from, um, H.A. Platinum. Um, because of Hoover, I just had, um, a concern, how, how do we go forward with this? Do I come to the city and pick up the resolution, or?
No, I'll send A.B.C. Board, this is Wendy, um, the city clerk, I'll send A.B.C. Board a, a letter tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, sounds great, thank you, thank you so much, everybody.
Anything else from the public? Arnold, Robin, you out there?
I'm good.
Well, anything else from the council? If not, then we will stand adjourned. All in favor? And disengage.